Okay, welcome back. Our next item is 11, 11. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's go back to 11. Hang on a sec. 11:5, right. All right, the Windrow program review, and this was pulled by Counselor. Oh, it's presentation, correct, but this is further discussion. Right, sorry. Right, the staff report. And who would like to remark on the staff? On Windrow. Windrow, we're on Windrow, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, Director, for your presentation. You know, I was, I've been around on this council for long enough now to know, you know, life before the Windrow program, life after the Windrow program, and all of the excitement in between. And, you know, I, I'm very familiar with this program. And I appreciated that one of the slides that I saw, and correct me if I'm misstating the facts here, but is that, okay, let me back up a minute. So I know from being on council before the Windrow program was in place, is that it's very, very important to have a program for seniors, peoples with disabilities and so on, to have their Windrows cleared. There's, you know, if you can't clear the wall of snow at the end of your driveway, I mean physically, like because you're a senior, because you're a person with disabilities or whatever, we need to make sure that that happens. I'm completely committed to that. But it, when we decided to do the universal Windrow program for everybody, it basically took away the need to have seniors' Windrow program. And the seniors' Windrow program at the time wasn't great. It wasn't, I mean, it took a long time, longer than the Windrow program that we have now. And we had, you know, some difficulties with that. And then part of what is, what you said is, it's not a very efficient way to clear a number of driveways within a larger area. You spend, you know, the drivers were spending a lot of time going from place to place to place and driving rather than actual clearing Windrow. So regardless of whatever, whatever outcome we do now or in the future, we need to, in my mind, we need to have a program that does do that. In one of the slides that you showed, there was a mention that the, the difference in cost between having just the seniors' program or having the whole Windrow program across the city isn't operationally very much different in terms of cost. And it becomes even less of a substantial amount per taxpayer when you break it up over the entire taxpaying public of the city. So I, you know, as much as I know that there are concerns with the timing of the Windrow program that we have now, I mean, it does take some time for the Windrow at the end of the driveway to get cleared. And I'm not diminishing the concerns. I mean, when people need to get going in their busy lives, they need to get going. And if the Windrow is blocking them, particularly if they've got their business clothes on and they're trying to get out for work, that is very frustrating. But I just think that if we were ever to cancel the Windrow program, at least in the next few years, I think we would end up with a situation that isn't a lot less expensive. And it's probably, well, it won't be more efficient. And I don't think that the service that people are getting will be substantially better. So what I would like to do is continue to work on the changes that we, we have the power to make procedurally to speed up the program. And I know that there was also a slide in there that mentioned that the, the program is becoming more efficient as time is going on. We're certainly seem to be doing a good job compared to some of the other municipalities that offer it. I think the inflection point for this program will likely be when the equipment starts to really wear out and has to be, because that's not going to be cheap. And, you know, if that's a number of years from now, given the fact that the equipment seems to be lasting longer than we expected it to be, I mean, who knows? I mean, our winters may be different. I mean, if this was a, if we had a winter like last year, every single year from now on, maybe we don't need the program at all. But I don't think, you know, living in Canada for the number of years I've lived in Canada for, that this is necessarily going to be the same year after year after year. But I think by receiving this motion, which is what I'm prepared to do today and what the staff report is recommending, we're kind of, we've gathered a whole bunch of information. We, we understand things, I think, on council better than I've even understood it. And I've been doing this for a number of years. And I think really what we're doing here is saying, okay, that's fine. Continue looking for efficiencies, for, continue to look for ways to make this program better, less costly, and so on and so forth. And let's, you know, leave it for a couple of years, see how it goes. And then maybe at some point in time in the future, we can reexamine whether we continue going ahead with it or whether we don't. But I think that's good. I just, in the only 20 seconds I have left over, I will also say, and I think this is important to remember, the, the human resourcing part of the Public Works Enhancement program made an immediate difference. When we saw that change, the, the, the work that needed to get done by the people that we had on staff at the time became better. And I think it was because we have more full-time staff, less part-time staff. And it's people that know what they're doing and, and are more experienced. And I think that was reflected very quickly in the quality of work that got done at the time. And so I don't really want to have less people doing the work that people expect because service level will go down in places like parks. And I'm over my time, but I promise I won't go on a second round unless somebody provokes me.
All right. Next is Regional and Local Counselor Dipola.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. The risk of provoking Mayor, I'm gonna say that I, I do also support the status quo and receiving this report. I think once this decision is made, we purchased the machinery and we've reorganized our staff complement. The, the cost of changing is, is cost prohibitive to go back to the former way that we, we did things. And I'm actually encouraged by the analysis that's been done. I think we're very cost-effectively providing a wonderful service. I think we continue to need to manage expectations out there. If there's an overnight snow event, you're not going to wake up to a cleared Windrow that you can, you can drive out of at 7:30 in the morning. But at some point during the day, it'll get done for you. And the feedback I've, I've received has been excellent. I, I know that the complaints come in because there's, there's an elevated expectation. And when, when the Windrow at the end of the driveway is not perfect, there are complaints. And, you know, we're, you know, we're creating an opening for, for residents and not fully responsible for complete snow removal of their boulevard throughout the entire winter. But that, that opening, it's valuable. We're really doing a good thing for our residents. And I agree with the mayor also that our year-round operations is, is really improved. The number of complaints and concerns that have come forward during the summer months about the maintenance of our, our parks and, and other public spaces has, has really improved. I don't know if it's coincidental or, or not, but I think we did a really good job leveraging the dollars in that, that community economic vitality reserve, or whatever it's called, Community Enhancement Reserve. We use those dollars, we leverage them well. I think we're in a good position. And, and the wear and tear on those vehicles is not what I thought it would be. It sounds like we're going to be able to use them for quite a while. And, and it sounds like at a later date, we'll be, we'll be making a judgment call on whether to, to buy new machinery, maybe for a portion of the city, continue to do it in-house, and maybe contract out some of the, of the Windrow management at a later date. But right now, it's working. And, and at a relatively low cost to, to our, to our residents, we're providing an excellent service. I'm glad to see that that's what came out of this report and happy to, to receive it and to promote continuing the status quo. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Xu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to support this report and I prefer moving it forward as well. Before I move it forward, I'd like to share the inquiries I received during the 2022, 2023 winter seasons. Most of the concerns in my world complained about the lengthy waiting time between road plowing and also the Windrow removal. So in my opinion, I believe our discussion should be not only for outsourced or not, but should be focused on how to reduce this delay. And I, I won't use the wording as a disappointment, but I have a bit of disappointing feeling because all of this report is talking about disadvantage of outsourcing. And, and to convince us to remain status quo, okay, that's it. But we should be focused on more how to improve the efficiency of Windrow removal and also to establish the better communications with the road plowing contractor. That's what we have to do more on this. So on one hand, I agree with the staff report's conclusion that is, is currently not the right time. It's only a good time to outsource or even scale down the Windrow removal program, especially when that equipment would remain idle and depreciate until 2029. And such a, such a move would be wasteful for tax base money. I agree that. And so I advocate for maintaining the Windrow program as they are. And next step, we should focusing on improving the communications with the private contractor for road plowing because this, we are concerned about the lack time between the two processes. And not only discuss outsourced or not, because outsourcing is only one potential measures to consider. That's my idea. So my question is, are there any plan in place to enhance the efficiency of the Windrow operations in the future or to establish a better communications with the road plowing contractor? This is my question through the chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. So first, I would like to point out that we, we are consistently achieving the council-approved service level for this program, which is to clear the Windrow within 13 hours after the end of the snowfall. And on Slide 6 that Director Corissa presented, our average completion time is 11.6 hours. So we are consistently over the service level. In addition to that, I think the mayor spoke to it. We, we have, ever since the program was implemented, been improving our service level, delivery time. And we continue to do that. And we will continue to do that in the future as we go on. I think every year, we learn things that enable us to speed up the service level time. I'm not sure what you mean by improving communications with the contractors, if you could explain that a bit more.
Okay, like, I'm not sure that if, there's any public information center, PIC, in the coming fall, before the winter season, to educate the people what our city is doing on the, on the Windrow removal services about this. I'm not sure that if we don't have any PIC on this, I suggest we have to do that to enhance the communication with the public, to educate them, to let them have a better understanding of what we are doing with the Windrow operations.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair. Ever since the Windrow program was initiated, it has had a very extensive communication program. We, it's not outlined in this report, but if you go back to the report last year for the, the winter maintenance summary in June, it had a, 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 quite a significant section of all the communications efforts we have made, including using the householder, the signage program that goes out notifying people about the Windrows. We used mock tickets to educate people instead of giving, to get the cars off the road. And we've done lots of communication through social media and, and through, actually tagging, I'm not sure what it's called, on, on the Weather Network and things like that to ensure people know where to get information about what happens during the winter events. And we'll certainly continue to do that. And we can talk to communications about additional strategies as well.
So, and my last, last question is, I'm trying to take a different perspective. Do you believe that consolidating road plowing and Windrow removal service under one entity? That means bringing, bringing the road plowing service back in-house would be an, an, an effective approach to reducing lag time?
Through you, Madam Chair, and maybe Director Corissa can help me out with this one. But I, I think he spoke to it a bit. We believe that having, right now, our road plowing system is not fully contracted. Half of it is done by the city and half of it is contracted. And we believe that there's benefits to that balance of, of having a bit of both. And the, the lag time is about, is not about it being two different crews. The lag time is about the, the need for the Windrow plows to start a bit behind the road plows or else they'll overtake them. And, and that, that becomes not an efficient use of the staff resources that the, the person who's operating the plow, which we also need to think about in planning these events because if the event is a large event, then we run into problems with the staff complement needing to take breaks. And, and that happens whether it's a contractor crew or whether it's a city crew. It's more about the timing of the two plows. Not sure if you want to add anything. We're good.
So my, my last question is, is it, is it the same route of, of the road plowing and also the Windrow removal? Is, is it the same route? Is that really the same route?
Yes, it is the same route.
Okay, so that means if we just, if it's, I'm, I'm just wondering if it's impossible to make the Windrow tractor just right behind the plowing machine? It sounds ideal, but, but.
Yes, it sounds ideal, but it's impossible.
Okay, I see. Yeah. Okay, so that's all my questions. And I will be definitely working with the staff to enhance the communication with the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on one of the earlier comments from Regional Counselor Dipala, I'm definitely going to be provoking the mayor, I think, with my comments. So first off, I do want to thank staff for the report. You've actually provided exactly what we asked for last year. And I'm just going to read what that said, which was to report back with a comprehensive review of the Windrow program that explores ways to enhance the effectiveness and efficiency of the program and includes an assessment of options with associated financial options. So you've delivered on exactly what council directed a year ago. And a year ago, I also said that, A, I was not a fan of the program, and I don't mind going on record to, and I'm only speaking now of the Windrow program. I'm not talking about the enhancements. Not a fan. And I said at the time that I felt that we should be getting an indication on whether or not we're getting value for money expended. We didn't go with that at the time. And I gave it time to say, okay, we're still sort of in that infancy. We're only, well, now we're five years in, so maybe I needed to, to give it more time. However, I was really disappointed when I found out that this Windrow equipment is unifocal. It only does one job, and that's to remove a Windrow from the end of a driveway. We don't use that equipment for anything else whatsoever. So the rest of the year, it just sits there requiring maintenance or whatever it needs, even when it sits. And when I, I look at the average number of times we've used this equipment in the past five years, we're in the single digits. And we spent $5.5 million to buy that equipment. I, I'm sorry, but that, that to me is not, you know, money well expended in, in my book. Now, if that equipment was multi-functional and did other things, I might feel a little differently. But I'm sorry, I can't feel differently about something like that. So I think if we're going to be giving direction moving forward at some point here, we got to be looking at how are we actually getting value for the money that's being expended, particularly if at, you know, year 10 or whatever. I mean, if this was $5.5 million in 2019, I hate to think what the cost would be, you know, in 2029. You know, even if we are able to extend the life of that equipment. So I would be looking at something more in tune with finding out how our residents actually feel about the money that gets expended for a program that operates less than 10 times a year and for using equipment that that's the only thing it ever gets used for. So those are my comments. I'm sorry if I provoked the mayor, but that's what I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Counselor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too, I'm too in, in support of this motion. I would like to thank staff for the report. This is a great report, and the report speaks volume. And, and I really like the, the context of it. I, I voted with other counselors to, to have this program a long time ago. And I, and I'm still thinking that it's, it's providing valuable service to our residents. When you look at the, 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 the money per driveway, you know, there's only $4.77. Okay, if you want to include the machinery, it's like 13 something or 23 something. I think it's still a very good deal to our residents. And, and I'd like to thank staff for, you know, like the mayor said, managing the human resources. This is amazing, you know, the full-time and, and mixed with the part-time strategy. And also trying to enhance and shorten the, the, the response time. I understand there's a lot of difficulties in, in, in improving the response time, but I, I know that staff is working hard on it. And I also like to see that, you know, we are, you know, in the report, there are some proposed program enhancements, including we might be able to track not only the plow, but we can also, might be able to track the, the, the snow Windrow machine. And I think that will help residents in, in understanding, you know. I, I think it comes down to managing the expectation, as I always say. And, and this managing expectation is on us counselors to communicate with our residents, to make them understand that there's a priority, not only for Windrow machine, it's also for all the snow piles, the snow removal surface. There is a priority within the city. And once they understand it and they accept it, I, I think is, is, it would be okay. No matter what we do or what we don't do, we all, we will always get complaints from our residents. But I, I think managing, you know, communication is one thing from the city, through website, through social media. And, but I think it's also on us to communicate with the residents, making them understand what this Windrow program, yes, no Windrow program is about. It takes time for them to come. I understand that lots of seniors, people, I have to go to work. I need to, you know, I, I have to go see the doctor. But it, what it is, it's only $4.77 per driveway per season. I think this is a great deal. And, you know, shout out to our staff, you know, in managing this so well. And I'm sure they will keep finding ways to improve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Regional and Local Counselor Chan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I indicated, one of the comments at presentation afterwards, I do understand the hard work. I mean, imagine you go out yourself and, well, we probably all did, shovel a driveway if you have one, and, and it's not fun during the cold days. A couple of speakers before me mentioned about the response time. I still remember vividly, I did say when I'm support, and I've always been calling to have this pononko, extra service in having the Windrow clearance. But the response time matters, meaning that I know there's only such a range as I'm hearing and seeing the report I can possibly do. I think within 13 hours, now is 11 hours, I'll say. So if it can be even lower, that meaning shorter timeframe turnaround would be even better. I think in the past, I did share, and if you allow me and my agents, that I personally have experienced. Wow, yes, we, the city does have Windrow clearance program, but not at the time when I try to get my driveway. So, so I, I take it is, I'm not the only example. And I think that's a challenge we all deal with. And I agree, communication in terms of managed expectation, as the speaker before me just said, is important. Mind you, I have to dig myself two times because when I come back, the, the show, the, the plow come back and you another, other, other Windrow. Having said that, I also like to see on Page 8 on the report, and be mentioned about the delicate track my plow screen. What, what kind of timeline may be looking at through you, Madam Chair, to staff? It's good to have it because it helps all of us to manage expectation.
Yes, in anticipation of, of some interest on the part of committee on that item, we've already started to look at it. We've tried to price it out, and we think that can be in place by the start of the next winter season.
Right. And to the extent that, I don't know, it's possible, the kind of just managing expectation. The Windrow plow would come around maybe within the next three hours. I don't know if there's a capability or ability to do that. It would be helpful. Then somebody like me, I know, okay, forget about it. I have to wait three hours. I may as well do it my own. To the extent of that functionality is possible, that'd be great. Through you, Madam Chair.
Through the chair, yes. And, and those are the kind of issues that we're looking at at this particular time. For example, do we show a tail in terms of where the equipment has been? What is the lag time that we would show on screen? My sense is that as a homeowner, who, rather than placing that call to access Richmond Hill, asking the question, when's my wind plow going to be done? If they're able to go on the system, look at the track my plow, recognize that a plow is already in their neighborhood, they know they're going to be done in, in a fairly short order.
Thank you. I think that's, that's very important, not only managing expectation, but for homeowners who need to know, then it'll be very helpful. And I believe it may not be mentioned here, we also have a dedicated snow line, if you recall. So maybe those communications go through telephone line as well as people go online. I hope that will be complimented each other. And I raised that question before and recently again. I, I, I get complaints about people on regional road. And there's only about 18, as indicated in the report. So is that a challenge? I just want to understand through Madam Chair. Is the challenge is to communicate, integrate, coordinate with the plowing actions on, on regional road? Or could we possibly maybe set some arrangement with the region so that properties funding on regional road get the same type of services as people facing city streets?
Yeah, through the chair, we've dealt with this issue. We've had a number of discussions, but I'll defer to my colleague.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that would require the council to approve for all residents on regional roads to receive the service, which currently is not as part of the staff report.
Yes, I do understand that. But my, what I prefaced my question with, is that something that can be, we sit on regional council or the help can initiate some discussion on this one so that it can be coordinated? I know we don't have that service level, but that's not my question through Madam Chair.
So, so one thing to know for sure is that the reason that you experienced the much longer service level time when we had that program is because of the coordination with the region. We, we, we don't know, like we do, where our plows are necessarily, where all of their plows are or what their intentions are in the future. So it, so I think council would certainly have to accept a longer service level time for those roads. Also, we don't generally provide service on the regional roads. I think that if the region wanted to provide that service, then maybe the region would provide that.
Thank you. But honestly, I, I think I, I realize all that. That's why I did say that, is there any particular interest or maybe require people sitting on the region, regional council to initiate a discussion? I realize that. So, so it doesn't sound to me that in the meantime, from the staff level, there was any kind of cross-communication or communication with the regional maintenance? I thought it may be, but it doesn't sound like it. Is it? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. There's, we're certainly collaborating, talking to the region on all events. Through you, Madam Chair. There's we're certainly collaborating, talking to the region on all events, particularly around sidewalks and and because sometimes the the road clearing affects the sidewalk clearing and vice versa. So we are in communication with them. It would certainly take a lot more communication to facilitate if we were doing all of the driveways on the regional roads.
Do you understand?
And perhaps could most be be more efficient through them.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I I know that we don't at the moment, but my point is to looking at ways and means to improve upon it. Because complaints quite often I got is that, as I mentioned earlier, people on regional role, because power is coming from the region and even if they get the the eighteen ones, we'll get our city function, ring draw. I gather talking about the challenge of time coordination. It's it's not as satisfactory to those people. And people arise, don't we pay the same tax that people live in an inside street? So anyway, I'm looking for answer for that. If anything's that I for one, I'm sure and mayor and my other colleague in the region, if you can help staff to stimulate more discussion and address that issue, I'll be more happy to do my in my role. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the report. It's very fruitful.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair. So, as we all know, Canada have almost two seasons, winter or near winter. So winter is quite long for us. Luckily, last year we only have two events, right? But that's not means maybe in the future we have lives, right? Average, I think it's more than six or seven. Imagine that's going to be a very, very challenge for us. So I I I had a few meetings with all the staff, operation staff regarding to the snow services. And the snow services, I got the moral, most complaints from residents. I think this service really affect a lot of people and a lot of focus as well. And no one is at least as I know, maybe some ones don't like this snow services, but majority of the residents, they pay a lot of interest for this service. They concern about it and they talk about it. I think this is really the key services we provide is through at least five months through the winter. So personally, I suggest I support this program. I see lots of people get benefits through this program. And definitely there are some services we need to focus on. As long as service there, there always has buffer to negotiate, to enhance. For example, our online system, we discussed a few times. If in the future there are the future enhancement can give the different timelines, for example, now we talk about maybe a confidential information or misleading information if we show up, which error being completed or not, right? But at least the system is there. Well, in the future, if we could consider twenty four hours or thirty six hours after our first events, showing different colors or tracking information, that can be benefits for a lot of residents. Also, for service regarding to a specific streets, you know, in all the wars, there are some special streets. If that information can be maybe shared through councillor to operation team, whom we are working on the street, be more familiar with the situation. You know that street has a big corner, it might take three or four times clean up. Everybody wear that, maybe we have a target, we can fix that issue later on. Those those type of information sharing and education sharing as well. And also regarding to the the timelines. I'm not sure all the council members. It's interesting, all those big winter events happening just through the weekend. It seldom happening from Monday to Friday. I don't understand. So that's not nature of mother, right? I got most calls emails through the weekend. At that time being, I cannot reach anybody. And thank you so much for Diego. Every time I send an email to Diego during weekend, he always responds. But I think that's not long term. We don't want to burn you out, right? So is there any service law agreement or service enhancement during those weekend? We still have someone available and to help and distribute workload from Diego to other team members support. This way, even we have some issues happening during weekend. And you know, the residents know councillor behind supporting through the weekend, but also staff has some charge center or hub center to share or upload the burden from our senior manager to other team members as well. That's something also definitely if we have more area can enhance. I'm looking for more works and coordination from councillor, security, community and also operating team together. Thank you.
Thank you. And I actually have some remarks to make and thank you for the report. I I found it really difficult to really get a handle on what this program costs because it is so intertwined with with other improvements. So I did want to ask, and even though you've explained it, it's still really hard to get my head around. If we go from forty four thousand driveways and compare to just do seniors, you know, a ten percent of that, that there's no savings there. How did we do senior driveways before we put the money into the big tractors that 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 we have now?
Through the chair, through the chair. The one thing to remember is we went through our city Richmond Hill, although before my time went through two different eras. One era in which the work was being performed by city staff. When I talked to those people who were around at the time, they talk about having a crew of six to eight staff with appropriate equipment. They would cover about twelve hundred driveways across the city. And in essence, they would get out of the snow plow in the wintertime when the snow plowing was complete. They would get into the truck with the plow to go and do the the windrows. Typically, that operation would be a sixteen hour operation, so a group of six to eight people to do twelve hundred driveways. Under this scenario where we talk about forty six hundred driveways, we're roughly talking about four times as many. Right? Four times as many driveways. If we're to do them within the same service standard, it's four times the staffing, four times the number of equipment. And when you start to add that up, that starts to equate very closely to what the current full house program contains in terms of staffing and equipment. The other piece, and I mentioned this in response to councillor Silvits earlier, the twenty nineteen staff report has an estimate of what the cost was to contract out the windrow. Because after it was after the era in which it was being done by city staff, it then was contracted out for a short period of time. That cost was reported in twenty nineteen at three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So three hundred and forty thousand dollars to do twelve hundred, fourteen hundred driveways at that time. Factor it up, add inflation. Where do you come to? You basically come back to the same number that it's costing us to do the full citywide program. No matter how you cut it, the difference between the two is in one case, production line, you're doing a hundred. And actually, I think the number is a hundred and eight driveways an hour in terms of the actual production rate versus how having someone sit in a truck or a piece of or a window piece of equipment and go and find the next driveway to plow. So huge difference in efficiency and fundamentally, it's that one is production line process and the other one is almost like an à la carte service to each individual driveway. And so that's that's the basis of which, from which the efficiency comes.
And I appreciate that. And of course, I would love to have gold plated service on everything, but the three hundred and forty thousand dollars was for a year of doing seniors driveways? Is that right? Yes. So last year with just two events, it cost us three hundred thousand dollars every event. So I I'm, I mean, there's just so many numbers, right? Wasn't, isn't, didn't it work out? Doesn't it work out to about two hundred ninety seven thousand dollars if we look at two times that we had windows done last year?
No, to respond, those numbers are the seasonal numbers for the entire winter season. So two events, which I don't have the slide deck in front of me, some two hundred, some odd thousand, the previous year at eleven events was what, two and a half times that number? So all the numbers that are reported in that staff report are either cost per windrow per season or total cost per season. So the three forty that 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 I mentioned in terms of the number in twenty, reported in twenty nineteen. Let's say that number today would be four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand. That's the equivalent, that's the equivalent of the true operating cost, the cost that goes to our operating budget to deliver full service across the city.
Okay, thank you. I do think this report is great to have, but I also think that it begs more investigation. I know Markham, Markham outsources their snow removal and it includes windrow and Markham like Ajax, Brampton, Mississauga, Oshwa, they do the enhanced the enhancement of not doing every driveway. And my understanding is that they have changed their standards and I'm not asking about Markham's, but what I could glean is that we send things out at five centimeters, they send things out at seven point five centimeters and that the window clearing is is enhanced, I think, for seniors and those who need help. And that that's all part of their outsourcing. I I'm not saying we need to outsource, but I do think we need to look at other options because we're faced with such dire budgetary issues. And the other thing that concerns me is according to Census Canada, in two thousand and six, there were sixty three point six percent single family homes, so sixty three percent of driveways. And then in two thousand and twenty one, now we're down to fifty six point seven, which means there's thirty five percent of taxpayers that don't get anything from this program. And we keep improving up density. So I don't, I see the growth in fewer and fewer single family homes in the future. So to sort of sign on for the life of machines, which could be, is it six or seven years? We could, before we really have to consider replacement?
Yeah, we think realistically at this point, we'd be shooting for twelve years in terms of total life, barring what we learn about the reliability of the equipment as we approach year ten. But I think that would be a reasonable estimate at this point.
So in the next ten years, I'm guessing there'll be fewer single family homes with driveways and there will be other taxpayers living in other ways, either in, and a lot of the townhouses are condos, so they pay for snow removal twice. They're paying for snow removal on my driveway, which is a single family home, and they're paying condo fees to cover theirs. I just think we really need to still look at this program. But for now, I agree, there's no point in in ending it, but I really look forward to further discussion and investigation and making it more cost effective. And if and if we can afford it in its current state. So those are my comments. Thank you. Does anyone else want second round? No? Mary, can we say that you moved this motion?
I feel a little bit provoked. Could I speak one more time?
So there is, so there is second round now? Okay, over to you.
I'll I'll just say, this this like anything we do around here is all about finding the balance, right? And I I think we've had a good discussion here like we we frequently do on this council. But a couple of things. These are not the only multifunctional machines or sort of single functional machines that we would have in our in our garage. I mean, any of the lawn equipment or any of that kind of stuff is, you know, we don't use that at other, for other purposes. We don't use chainsaws for anything other than cutting trees down. But I would also say that the 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 less that we use these machines for their designed purpose, the longer they're going to last. I mean, there is a point at which they'll rust out just because of, you know, salt and stuff. But I mean, I think the 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 fact that we're not using them for other things does mean that the machines themselves will probably end up lasting longer than expected. I think, you know, there's a lot of services that we offer in a municipality that we don't necessarily offer very often, but when we do offer it, it's good quality service. And and so I think that the frequency of the number of times that the window machines go out isn't necessarily a measure of the value of the service to the people that receive the service. And the final thing, or second final thing I would say is that, you know, I do get periodically get people say, well, you know, I I always beat the window machine and go, you know, clear my own window. And that's true. And I I've been in that situation too, where I've had to leave early after a snowstorm. I'm out there, you know, doing my, the end of my driveway, but I, you know, then I'll watch the window plow show up and do a whole bunch of driveways on my street. So those people that they're doing are getting their driveways cleared. So I mean, even though I didn't get my driveway done, lots of people are getting their driveway done. And sometimes I get my driveway done. So it all kind of, in my mind, it it kind of balances out in the end. The one final thing too, and I want to, I want to really would love to be able to put this one to rest. Because I, we talked about this when we first designed this program. The the point, I mean, ideally, it would be so great if we could have the window machine and the plow as one unit. Now, they go down the street, they they create the window and then instantly the window goes away by the same machine. I correct me if I'm wrong, but I can imagine what would happen if we decided to do that. And what would happen is this, a a snow plow on the street goes at, I don't know, forty kilometers an hour and gets a lot of streets covered in a short period of time. A windrow plow probably goes on average of about five kilometers now. So if we were to have the windrow machine right after the snow plow, it would take a whole heck of a lot longer to get the streets cleared. And actually, we have obligations under the law to get the streets cleared by a certain period of time. So that isn't likely going to happen. And I remember seeing a video one time and it was in a rural area of a a grader going down a rural road, doing that. But the thing is, the driveways were like one every kilometer. It won't make a difference, but you can't do that in an urban environment like Richmond Hill. So I I think what we're left with here is a choice. Do we want the windrow program or do we not? And the other choice is, do we want to look at always being able to improve the the response time between time the window is created and the time the window goes away? And I know we're doing that. I've seen improvements since the beginning of this program happening. And and I expect that we'll continue to make incremental incremental improvements over time. So anyway, I appreciate the discussion here, but the last thing I just leave you with is that like I get it, it's frustrating when you're trying to get out there and mother nature decided to throw you a curveball. You know, just at the wrong time of day and it's it's six o'clock in the morning, the the snow started and ended at the wrong time and you've got to get out to work. And those are the people we get phoning us up and they're angry and I don't blame them. I'd I'd be upset too. But we really need as council members to make sure that we're a part of the solution to get the accurate information out there to let people know. Look, I understand you're upset. Here's the, here's the, you know, the facts and and whatever assets we have from a communication point of view, and we have developed a number of them, even in this last year or two. We should make sure that we're pointing people to those communication assets so that they can understand it as well as we. So that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. And actually, I, oh, Scott, councillor Thompson's second round? Okay.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I'm not provoked, by the way, just want to, you know, clarify that. There was a a comment made about the the former seniors program that I think it was around twelve twelve thousand, no, twelve hundred driveways. And we expect that at this point, it could be around four times that amount. Okay. And I I guess I I wouldn't think that we'd be using the same type of program that we used back then if we decided to go back to that route or go back to that type of model. I I would think that we would have other efficient ways now of of dealing with those. So I'm a little concerned about the way we've come up with some of the the numbers here in terms of, you know, are we gonna, you know, make any difference if we go back to that model? I I think that I think we we can. And I do appreciate that, you know, over the the time, so as you've indicated in the the report here, that yes, we've become more efficient. Yes, council approved particular targets, which were at thirteen hours and quite, quite frankly, not sure how many people can really, you know, say, oh, yeah, I can wait thirteen hours before I have to go to that doctor's appointment. I mean, that's not reality. So yes, we've got it down to eleven point six. I think that's great. But, you know, in the in the end, we can do all the education that we want to people and say, well, this is the program, this is the number of hours. And I'm I'm sure that's why the majority of the access calls were dealt with in the the first call because in all likelihood, people are calling, you know, and then the response is going to be, well, you know, it's not time for you to call yet because thirteen hours hasn't passed. So I suspect that's why more than, you know, fifty five percent of the calls were dealt with on the on the first go around. And again, obviously, I'm not going to, you know, say, let's not receive the report because no, absolutely, we should receive this report. This is exactly what we asked for. I'm just talking about going down the road. I think we have other considerations that we need to look at. Particularly, as I mentioned earlier, the 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 value for money expended. And I'm I'm kind of going down the same direction that the the chair is is going in in terms of you know, looking at the the numbers in a different manner, you know. I know that we've got it down to a cost per driveway. But is that what we really need or is that what we really should be? But is that what we really need or is that what we really should be looking at? I think that if we got to similar programs that other jurisdictions have done, where they have a cost that say, okay, if you want to opt into this program, here's the cost. You know, if it's $200 or whatever for, for the season. And then we'll see, do we get four times the 1,200 that we had before or not? So, you know, that's, that's one of the considerations I think we would want to look at. There was another point that I wanted to make, and I just lost it. 58 seconds, let me think here. So, yeah, there is, it just, I really think that we need to find a way to find out what our people really want. Because I know I'm a senior, sure, my street is, is kind of short. So yeah, it's going to be one of the last ones that gets looked at even, you know, and as I think it was mentioned before, each route, the window follows whatever the routes are. And I'm sure you have primary roads that you have to do first and so forth. So I'm probably always going to be at the end. And even though I'm a senior, yes, I'm still doing my driveway. But you know what? I'm privileged. I'm lucky. I own a home. I own a car. A lot of people don't, and a lot of people don't have the health to be able to deal with those things. So I find that this is a program for the privileged, and I have a tough time supporting it. Sorry.
Thank you. This is second round. Okay, I do, okay, well, I do want to say, I agree with the mayor that the equipment that isn't used much will last longer, but we also have to maintain it. And if I'm looking at a piece of equipment and I'm thinking, well, I won't use it much, I really would wonder if I need it. And I think there's two sides to this whole argument. And I have, I have no argument with the level of service we're providing. My, my question is, can we sustain it? And since the councillor, councillor Thompson mentioned how other municipalities do it, Oakville, which is similar in size to Richmond Hill, they charge residents in 23, 24, $115.26 to have your window done. So I do think we have to look at models that are more than just a blanket coverage for people who have driveways. So that's down the road. And Merritt, can we say that you moved the, you moved the, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to receive the window report. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, our next one is out of order, so I have to look. It is 11.4. 11.4, which is the Community and Cultural Applications Grants. And councillor Shu, you move, you hold that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just talked to councillor Thompson about this issue. And I would like to let councillor Thompson to be the first speaker and move the motion.
All right, councillor Thompson, Thompson, over to you.
Thank you so much. Through the chair, there's, I, well, okay, so we're going to move the motion, but I'd like to move the motion with an amendment here. And that is to actually send one of the recommended recipients back for further review. And that would be the Markham Arts Council. What, what we've determined here is that, and I appreciate everything that the review team has done. You know, they're, they've looked at things based on, you know, how it's going to benefit Richmond Hill. And so, you know, it doesn't really matter where the company or organization is from that wants to provide a service, as long as, as long as it's Richmond Hill that's the beneficiary, then I'm, I'm good with that. However, this particular application that came in, something came up that, that makes me feel that we need to send this back because the review team wouldn't have known what has or has not actually occurred behind the scenes other than what they see in the application. And the application did talk about working collaboratively with our own business improvement area, of which myself and councillor Tree are members of. However, they were talking about doing a program this summer. And quite frankly, we have not been contacted yet in, in regards to how we would collaboratively do that. And I believe that they were counting on finances coming from the BIA, which our funds for this year have already been allocated. So for something like that to be able to occur this summer, I'm not seeing how that would be possible. So I've asked the clerk to put together a revised motion here, which we have up on the screen now, which actually has removed the Markham Arts Council so that further investigation can be done before ever, before we might, may or may not award that. I don't know if it will get to, at some point. But give them the opportunity to resolve the issues that we have discovered and, and go from there. So this is, that's my revised motion.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you clarify, if we're asking for an amendment to this, do we get a second or what's the procedure here?
Thank you. To the chair. So because councillor Thompson moved the motion, and it is the main motion, there's no requirement for an amendment at this time.
Okay, next is Mayor West.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. So first of all, generally speaking, I want to say thank you to staff and the volunteer community members that helped to vet the, these different applications. I look forward to seeing the result of this. I mean, the whole idea of the Community and Cultural Grant Program is to bring, to support organizations and artists specifically within our community that are doing great work and contributing, you know, to our community, but also to support organizations to put on cultural events within our community that enrich our community. And I know how much, in the past, organizations that have received grant funding have done. I mean, it's money invested, but it's the, you know, like anything we do, it's the value to the community in enriching the community that we live in. And the, the applications here, I have no doubt, will, will do that. I do want to just address something that I've heard a little bit here and there about the concern that a few of these organizations, I think it's two or three, or something like that, are not based in Richmond Hill. They're based outside of our municipality. It's a valid question, but I guess in the criteria in this grant for the applicants, there's, you either have to live in Richmond Hill, you have to be somebody who is going to be doing something in Richmond Hill, but you lives outside of Richmond Hill, or you're both, right? And so if an organization outside of our municipality, you know, that does good work in, say, the region as a whole or whatever, but they're actually based outside of our municipality, wants to do something to benefit our community, then I, that's exactly what this grant is all about. And I actually think that, you know, from an arts and cultural point of view, we really would not necessarily, although most of these organizations are actually based out of Richmond Hill, but I don't think it serves us well to be building walls to say, well, you have to live in Richmond Hill or you won't get it. I mean, the, what the bar that I'm looking for here is, does this benefit our community? And the organizations that don't live in, or aren't based out of Richmond Hill are doing something to benefit our community within Richmond Hill. And I think that's very, very important to, to, to talk about. I mean, there has been some, you know, some conversations about the value of that, but I think that point was being missed in that. So I, you know, as I said, I look forward to this. I think there is, in fairness, an opportunity to do a little bit of review and update about our criteria, as there always is in almost anything we do. I did move a motion a little while ago to use some of our surplus money's interest to provide supplemental grant money to this program to expand it even further. And with that change, minor change, I guess, in the program, but adding a bit more resources to the program, I do understand from staff that there will be an opportunity to take a look, you know, update the criteria, you know, and our procedures and so on, you know, as the next round comes out next year. So I'm looking forward to that as well. But I'm looking forward to seeing the results of all of these different events that are going to be happening and, and, you know, the enrichment and the, the entertainment and the cultural pieces that these folks are going to be bringing to us in the near future. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Regional and Local Councillor DePaula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the mayor partially answered my question in, in what he said there. But I just want to clarify, so the additional money that was, that was agreed and voted on by council that we would use the interest on, on one of our, on the amount of money that was going to be dedicated to a reserve, that doesn't take effect till next year to add to our Community and Cultural Grant Program? And why is that? Was that a decision toward the 2025 budget?
Would you like to answer?
Mr. Madam Chair, to Regional Councillor DePaula, so that's correct. We are coming back as part of the 2025 budget to provide the options and to discuss the details. So it will be taking effect in 2025.
Okay, so it was surplus money that came at the end of 2023? And then we, wouldn't we be able to use it in this year, allocating that? So the surplus money, I guess, it'll just be generating more interest from the time come. It's going into that interest-bearing account. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. And next, we have councillor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too have concern when I see that Markham Arts Council are on the list. Just through you, Madam Chair, to, to staff, because I don't have the detail of the application. So what are they trying to do? I only see music on the street. So do you, can you provide us with more information on what they're trying to do in Richmond Hill? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. So their, their project was called Music on the Street. And what they were proposing to do was over 18 weekends over the course of the summer, they would hire or recruit one busker-style performer per weekend to be in the downtown area and on a, on the corner and do their, their thing, whatever that, the entertainment is for that busker. And that was, that's their proposal. They run a very successful similar program in Unionville where they do this. And the businesses there are, they're quite supportive of it because they believe it helps them bring a business to downtown.
Thank you. So while I'm looking at the motion in front of us, so it basically said, you know, we approve all the staff recommendation except Markham Arts Council. Am I correct through you, Madam Chair? Maybe to the mover, councillor Thompson? I'm just trying to understand the motion.
Correct. So basically, it's not that we're denying the Markham Arts Council. We're just sending it back for further review to make sure that it would have been possible. It could come back, you know, but at this point, I didn't want to hold up everybody else while that was going on.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah. I, I think my, my question around this, I don't have a problem with this. Just that we always have next week to, to ratify council's decision. So my question is, if they come back next Wednesday and they made a case to council, so, and then, and then there's a possibility that we will approve that $5,000 to them? Or if they don't come back next Wednesday, then it's gone. So, but we still have $5,000 to allocate. So, so how do we allocate that extra $5,000? Through you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, is this one for you?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think, I think there's two parts to that. Maybe the clerk can help out procedurally. The main concern with the application right now is that they have proposed funding that, that in order, part of the requirements for our program is that you need matching funding. And they've proposed that that matching funding is going to come from the BIA. But we're, the concern is that the BIA actually doesn't have money to contribute to the project. So how can they match it? So how can the project go forward? To clarify that, that's the issue. So if, if there is, if, if we talk to the BIA and the BIA says, yeah, we could, we could do this somehow, then yeah, we could put the, the project back on the agenda for next, next week.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, from a procedural point of view, if we lift it today, is it back there next week?
Thank you. Through the chair, that's correct. If council or committee votes on this, it will certainly come back to council next week for a sober second thought. And an amendment could certainly be made to either put it back in or, or leave it as is.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so what if we, so, so my second question is, what, what if we decided not to give them the $5,000? So where would this $5,000 go? So do we have to go back to the committee and then they will make another suggestion? Or what's the procedure of this? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, sorry, I forgot about that point. So we have already done a high-level review of the applications and what would be the next one up that, that could take the place. We do feel like we should go back to the committee to talk about that, the resident committee, and let them make the choice because there is no obvious next one up. From what we can tell, the next applications had different eligibility issues. So we would have to go back to them if we wanted to fill that in. Otherwise, we could just leave it at $60,000 this year awarded. That would be it.
Oh, okay. Because I'm sure, you know, some of the organization, they, they wanted that money. So I just trying to, you know, because next week will be a done deal. I don't, I don't know how, how the procedure will work. So if that $5,000 is, it's out there, I'd rather give it to some other organizations than, than just stay it at $6,000, $60,000. So how can we do that? So next, so is staff going to come back with, with, with some suggestion that who is next in line? You, Madam Chair?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, we will try to find a replacement and put it back on the agenda if that's, if that's what council wants us to do.
Great, thank you. Do we need to put that into the motion or is, is understood? Just asking.
Manager Jocelyn.
Through you, Madam Chair, just for clarification. The budget that we got assigned for this is $65,000. So it means that we can expend anywhere up to $65,000. It doesn't mean that we have to spend $65,000. The committee has gone through, you know, an extensive review process with all the applications. And these are the ones that they have chosen to come forward with. What this motion does by removing the Markham Arts Council, it brings our budget just below $59,000 in staff to kind of go back and have some conversations around this particular grant program. And, and there could or could not be further reports coming back to council. So we would still have $5,000 left in our budget that we could come back to council at any time in 2024 with a recommendation for a further event. So in, in my opinion, you, you know, that's implied in how we conduct our grant programs. So that's just matter of course for us in our review.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have councillor Tree.
Just comment. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So tomorrow, we might have a meeting with BIA, our local BIA. We might bring this topic to the BIA meeting for discussion. And if there are further information to come back, maybe we can share it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else? Oh, my councillor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And talking about this issue of Markham Arts Council, I have an idea. Can we just give them a deadline? Let's say one week before the next council meeting, if we give them a grace period, if they submit any evidence and proof to work with the BIA, and we have evidence that they will be, have any project take, take place in our city. take place in our city. Then we can amend this revised version, this motion next week. I'm not sure if it's a feasible way to handle this issue. Just give them one more week to to submit any evidence.
Can I can I just clarify what I heard, Mr. Clerk, is that if staff go back and come back next week with validation for this application for the Markham Arts Council, it can be put back into the grant motion. So we'll give it a week and see where we end up, and it may or may not end up in the end getting the grant money. Is that is that correct assessment?
To the chair. Procedurally, it may not actually wouldn't work that way for should staff bring forward, let's say, a memo to council next week stating what has happened in terms of a conversation with the Markham Arts Council, that point in time certainly could come up, but for that to happen without any sort of staff memo would require a council member to move at council with the Markham Arts Council grant and the value to be inserted at that time through council, not through staff, not through a staff's sort of revised recommendation or or memo.
So that would be an amendment on the spot during that council meeting next Wednesday?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So I I'm I'm good. So is the manager something to say here?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just as a suggestion for council. The motion that's put forward on the floor could proceed today as is, as is written. If council votes in favor of all the grant applications that are in front of you, then we will proceed with the application process. It'll be ratified at council next week. If there is new information that comes as a result of the Markham Arts Council and the conversations that staff are able to have either with the BIA, the Markham Arts Council, or a combination, of course, of both, we can bring that forward as a separate item for council, other under memo as the deputy clerk has suggested, or at another time when we've been able to deal with all the details behind it. But right now, there's enough, I think, questions on the application that we have some work to do with that organization.
Through Madam Chair, but do we have enough time to do that? Because next week will be the last council meeting before summer recess.
Through you, Madam Chair. Chair, in my clarification, I'm not sure we have enough time to do it in time for next week. That's why I'm suggesting that the motion in front of you, council can proceed to vote on those clean grant applications as presented. And then if any new information comes to light to move the Markham Arts Council in some way, shape, or form, we can do that next week at council, or we can do that at any council meeting in the future. Doesn't have to be next week. Because I'm going to suggest trying to get the conversations that we require to have, trying to get the committee to have another look at new information is likely not going to happen within a one-week period.
And through the Madam Chair, is any deadline for the grant approval date? Is any deadline? If has a deadline on in summary, this, oh, sorry about that. Next year, please. Is any deadline for the approval of the grant?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the deadline was to receive applications, which we have received those applications by now. But there's no deadline for us administratively on issuing the grants under that budget line. So we're not bound by that timing. And, you know, again, if if something does come to light to move this event forward, then we can come back to council at any time, you know, with that information.
So I would say I support this revised one and just put the move it forward first. Okay, at this moment.
Thank you.
And I have another question or about it. Can I have another questions? Thank you so much for providing further details for the grant program. And according to the information commissioner still provide yesterday, the selection committee versus six members, three from the staff and three from the public. So are there any regulations in place that to ensure that the three members from the public are living in our city? This is crucial, I think.
Through you, Madam Chair. There is a terms of reference for the committee, and we believe that it says they need to be residents of Richmond Hill.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for your occasion because I think it's crucial because we only need residents living in our city to to have authority how to allocate the taxpayers' money in our city. So that's crucial to make sure that. And actually, I've no any questions. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on first round? No, I do want to say I think it's great that we're asking questions about these grants and we're here to hopefully promote arts and culture, but also make sure money is allocated in a way that best benefits Richmond Hill residents. I do want to know, and and we didn't really get into the meat and potatoes of all these applications as as counselors. But was the busker proposal, did it guarantee that those those entertainment position busker designations would be Richmond Hill talent?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, it does not guarantee that.
So the event would happen in Richmond Hill, but it might not even be a Richmond Hill resident doing the entertaining. It could be someone from anywhere.
Through you, it doesn't specify.
Okay, thank you. I support this amended motion. Thank you. Anyone for second round? Counselor Tree? Yes.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just very quick one. I got feedback from residents this morning after we have this culture awards on the line. They discussed their local. They told me they are kind of disappointed and they see a lot of the other committee members from all of our city apply and get the word. That's my comment from this morning. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Second round now to Counselor Thompson.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all my colleagues for questions, observations. And and so it does make me think that maybe there's some things that we may want to look at and review moving forward. Because, you know, I mean, this was a unique situation. You can't always plan for everything, but I'm wondering now if we had have had, I'd say, a first right of refusal, or even if the committee had of, you know, instead of when we got to a point where, you know, there's no more monies available for the programs that were requesting it. But if something happened where we didn't have funds that were going to go out, then could we have the next one in line already identified that type of thing depending on what type of dollars were available? So like if it was someone who was also looking for something in the 5,000, but they they were, you know, not deemed to be as high a priority as all the other ones, but they were the next one in line, then fine. Or if the the dollar amount had been less or something like that, then there could be another one behind that. So like, let's say there wasn't 5,000 available, but that was the next organization that was in line. But there was only 3,000 available, then, you know, I think you see where I'm going with this. So and just just that's more of a comment, not a question, just thinking that that's something that we could do. But maybe I will turn it into a question. And I I think the city manager already answered it, that it's not likely that we would be able to get that type of information before next Wednesday.
Through you, Madam Chair. In my opinion, it's not likely because we'd have to have that information ready for council by Friday or Monday morning at the latest. So I'm suggesting that it may take a bit longer time period for that. And if something comes to fruition with it, we can memo out to members of council or call a special meeting or what have you.
Okay, so thank you very much for the answer. So then really my comment would be more for down the road, that whatever applications come in, we rank them in the various order, regardless whether that we're going to be able to to accommodate them or not. That would be my observation.
Those are your remarks. Thank you. Next, we have Mayor West.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate something I'd said earlier. So to be clear on the geographic location of where the the performers are from or where the applicants are from, I mean, to be clear, the vast majority of these people that we're approving here are from Richmond Hill. But lots of organizations, I mean, including O'Deawin, do work in other municipalities too, right? I mean, so but the thing is that when we have other facilities in Richmond Hill, like soccer fields, baseball diamonds, hockey rinks, the Richmond Hill Center for the Performing Arts, we don't restrict those facilities to only the taxpaying public that paid for those facilities. If a ringette team wants to come and play our ringette team from Richmond Hill, and they're from Timmins, we don't bar them from playing in our arena. I mean, this is all part of enriching the experience of sport for the teams that play out-of-town teams in our in our community. At the Richmond Hill Center for the Performing Arts, I mean, as much as our performers from Richmond Hill are really, really good, we're not going to tell Kim Mitchell, who I think is from, you know, Toronto, he can't play in the Richmond Hill Center for the Performing Arts because he wasn't born and raised in Richmond Hill. I mean, this is the idea here is that we allow performers from all over the world, frankly, to come to our community, to enrich our community. We live in a in a very global society. So having a performer, you know, who has a unique talent and brings a unique perspective, and they happen to be living in another municipality, come and entertain and and, you know, delight our our folks, our residents in Richmond Hill. I mean, there's lots of winners there, but I would argue that one of the winners there is our community. So I'm I'm hearing a little bit of rumbling still that, you know, we may want to consider, you know, changing the correct criteria where we build all these artistic walls here and say, well, you know, you can't, you can't get any of these grant fundings to enrich our community if you don't live in Richmond Hill. And we can do that. But I'm just saying that, you know, we do limit the pool of recipients to this program if we do that. And having, you know, some spices from outside of your own spice cupboard is probably not a bad way to cook. So that's basically why I think that the the way that the this grant program is structured and the purposes for which it is structured, I think, are being fulfilled here. And and I'm comfortable with that. But, you know, ultimately, that's going to be up to council to decide. But in terms of, you know, folks making comments to you, Counselor Tree, I mean, I don't know, that that would be the answer that I would give if I was asked that question.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Shu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a different opinion, a bit different opinion with Mayor West, but no offensive, Mayor West, just a discussion. A policy for booking facilities in our community center gives preference to Richmond Hill base and residents living in our city with discounts for reservation. I believe this policy aligns with our city interests. But it seems that the same rationale is not applied to the selection of the grand recipients. I'm not sure if it's a good example to get a reference, but I do think if if the applicant is living in our city or is a Richmond Hill base, this is an advantage. Because it's aligned with our interest in our city. Just open discussion. Through the chair.
Those are your remarks? Oh, your question, sorry. Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. I I think to that, I would just say that when the committee reviews these applications, one of the main goals in their weighting system is to assess the value of the program to Richmond Hill as a whole. So they would factor into that decision the level of benefit to Richmond Hill as a whole. So if you had the exact same program being presented by a Richmond Hill-based organization versus an organization, maybe that came from outside Richmond Hill and didn't have Richmond Hill performance, the first one would get more highly weighted in the system. So it does try to adjust for these things as overall in terms of the greater value to Richmond Hill as a community.
So through the Madam Chair, I have a situation, just a what-if question. Also, if there's a non, okay, let's see, let me put it this way. If there's an organization or applicants based on our city, but there's no evidence that he will just have any project taking place in the next year and he apply for the grant. Okay, on the other hand, there's a non-Richmond Hill-based organization. And they say that they will have some events take place in our city, which weighs more for you? So what criteria for you to wait? Which one is have the priority and advantage? Just what-if questions?
Through you, Madam Chair. So this is part of the reason we have residents on the committee. So they are evaluating these applications. I I think that it's clear that the more involvement that you have for from Richmond Hill, whether it's in facilitating the event or being a performer in the event or attending the event, the more you have Richmond Hill, the more it it benefits Richmond Hill.
Let's see. Okay, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Silvitz, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's just one comment I want to make, and that is with all respect to Mayor West. I believe that the crux of the matter here is that we are using taxpayers' money. It's not coming from an outside source. So I I believe just that in and of itself should, you know, should should spark the interest of council in our as we as we are the elected officials, this is taxpayers' money that's being granted to organizations. So whether or not it's outside organizations, is it an organization or an inside organization? And that's something that can be debated at another time. The point is, this is taxpayers' money. And we are beholden to our taxpayers to ensure the money goes to the appropriate choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on second round? No, I I would like to add my remarks. I think there might be a difference in how council members view this fund. I viewed this fund, since we know the arts aren't really a great paying job, and a lot of people don't get the opportunity to explore their art artistic side, that this is a grassroots little hand up to groups that want to do cultural and artistic things in the community. And it was just an assumption on my end that, of course, anyone who lives here would be have first dibs on any of that funding. Of course, we all want to see Richmond Hill talent at a Richmond Hill taxpayer-funded event, and that's where I'm coming from. And if we don't have that written down in our guidelines as to how we allocate money, I I'm pretty sure we can't change things now, but for next term, I think we really need to be clear on what we think would be best serving the taxpayers supporting these these programs and what their expectation is. I'm not talking about a huge review, but from my end, I want the kid from Oak Ridge is on the corner playing the guitar before I want someone from Markham, and that's just because we're looking after our 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 community. So those are my final comments. We had, the mayor moved it? Oh, Counselor Thompson, it's right. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? All those in favor? Those that passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next on our hit parade is next we're going to, is it 11? 11.6 and 11.6. Counselor Tree, you pulled the staff, sorry, you pulled traffic regulation changes. Over to you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, to our check team. Obviously, thank you so much for for all you have done. And in the past one and a half years, we received a lot of excellent and positive feedback from our community. And the rise in so when I run the election, they pay a lot of attention, discussion regarding traffic, coming, speeding issues. I think through this one and a half year, we did see a lot of changes for the traffic changes, speeding changes, also our TSO as well. So my first question going to be regarding to the status of those 18 locations pilot for building up the bump harms in the city wise. Is is there any news for that one? Because in my work, I did see harm build up on certain street. And the feedback from community are really, really positive. Everybody happy to see that changes. So for the remaining one, any status for the remaining the harmful bump?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. Yeah, thank you for the question and very much appreciate the positive feedback. As indicated earlier on the year, when we brought forward the As indicated uh, earlier on the year, when we brought forward the T-SOS recommendations and the key action items of those eighteen locations are scheduled to be completed by the end of June. And last being updated and briefed from my team, we're still on track with meeting those targets and timelines. And we will, as a reminder, be reporting back uh, in November as to the efficacy and uh, how well the the eighteen locations have been progressing. That is one of our action items as well to come back later in the year.
Thank you so much. My second question regarding to the uh, the the pole or radar poles. There is two locations. I remember we have a um, inside of the mounted pole for monitoring traffic. We do have those mobility trailers. My question is here, for city wise, how many trailers available uh, as a total?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. Thank you for the question. That's in reference to item eleven seven, the pole mounted radar speed message boards. And um, what I can tell you is that of the mobile uh, pieces of equipment, there are two. They are separate from the locations proposed within the staff report before you. In the ones before you, uh, what we can also say is that uh, we've expanded that program, which is probably why we've also received some positive feedback from the eighteen to thirty locations, so an additional twelve locations. For the question that you have regarding the um, more mobile versions of those, the the two mobile pieces of equipment that we have are not included in that total thirty. And the other ones uh, that are mobile are intended to be used in various locations in addition to those thirty on a two to four week period to pick up data based on, you know, inquiries or things that might pop up on a time to time basis. Whereas the pole mounted radar boards uh, stay within their locations for the better part of a year in order to better uh, collect uh, data. Data collected over a long period of time allows staff to create a better analysis uh, to determine locations for future traffic calming locations.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I because the reason I asking for the the mobility reader uh, monitoring is in my word, there are two streets currently being engaged by residents complaining about the traffic. One is Leventale, which is close to Young Street, and that's the one of the entry point to Mill Pond Community. I receive at least two or three calls recently. Another one is Regent Street and close to the Adamus. We do have a mounted radar system along the Regent Street and Bassa's area. That's the one entry. But there's another one on the Regent as well. So I I'll talk with you separately regarding to some new streets or new locations later. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this motion? We have a motion on the floor. All those, oh, no, nope. Oh, something. Oh, we need a mover. I'm sorry. I thought you moved it. My apologies. We have, okay. Counselor Tree, all those in favor? That passes. Thank you. Next we have eleven point nine. Counselor Tree, you also lift uh, hold that one? That's regarding uh, one thirty Performance Drive.
Yes. So thank you so much, Madam Chair, and to our planning department. This is one thirty Performance Drive. If I remember from the map, it's in our business park. The purpose of this plan is going to be build out the residential buildings or still commercial buildings. That one, I know Cosmos Music is there, a lot to uh, construct an industrial area there too. So just want to confirm what's the what's the perform lines here?
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, the application before council today is for a draft plan of condominium. And I know often when we refer to condominiums, we always think of residential tenure. But they also apply to industrial, commercial, retail, whatever it may be. What is actually the case here is that there's an existing industrial, commercial building on the property. It already operates as three individual units. It's not unusual. We have that throughout our business parks, and the landowners just formalizing condominium tenure for those three units. It will continue to operate as an industrial, commercial building.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And you move this motion? Yep. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? That passes. Thank you. And the last one we go to is eleven point eleven. And Counselor Tree, you lit you pulled that one?
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I do have a few questions regarding to this plan. It actually is not related to design for the uh, townhouse or houses around there. It's for the traffic, because this specific question is along the Young, uh, Leslie Street and Nineteenth Street. If you look at my perspective or a traffic perspective, it's extension from Young to the four oh four, there's a single line there. That's Nineteenth Street. Also, north is Leslie Street. It's also a single line. I'm seeing, so driving this uh, this road almost every day, I'm seeing more and more townhouses, houses and building up along this one. Just curiosities for the traffic perspective. From region, I know the region road, from region perspective, is there any plan regarding to the expansion of Leslie Street North? Also, the east side of Nineteenth Street close to the four oh four.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. Um, we can look into uh, those uh, proposed uh, improvements through the regions, our contacts at the regions, uh, their ten year capital plan. At this time, I'm not sure what their plans are for any reconstructions or improvements or widening. But portions of nineteenth are city owned, portions are regionally owned. And uh, we would need to coordinate, so I can certainly take that back and um, update you on any of the regions' future plans on uh, on that area.
Okay, thank you. Uh, another question regarding to the Nineteenth Street. There are a lot of hearsay. I know uh, four oh four highway is not belong to city or region. It might be on her province. So residents asked me around a few years ago regarding to a new highway operating from Nineteenth Street to four oh four. Is there any way you know the news? Please let us know. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? You've, yes, you've moved it. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? That passes. Mr. Clerk, have we made it through the agenda? Wow. So our next, I need a mover to adjourn. And Counselor Silovitz, all those in favor of adjournment? Thank you so much.